Two o'clock. Good afternoon, all. I'd like to call the Suffolk Planning Commission to order for the February meeting. I'll call on Commissioner Goodman for the invocation.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for watching over our city and giving us the wisdom to do the work that is set before us this day. In Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine. Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks. Vice Chairman Staler.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Are there any corrections to the minutes from the January meeting? No correction, we stand approved as presented. We have two items on our agenda today that are not public hearings. They are family transfers. The first item would be family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2023-006. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. All right, this is a family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2023-006, submitted by Frank M. Rawls, Ferguson Rawls &amp; Reins, PC, applicant, on behalf of Jonathan P. Atkins, property owner. They are requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31 514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve a family transfer subdivision plat to create two new parcels on property located at 991 Loomis Road, zoning map 41, parcel 31. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the Rural Agricultural Use District. When acting on this request, you will be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located at 991 Loomis Road, zoning map 41, parcel 31. Account number 153606000, FTR 2023-006. Staff Planner Grace Brazil will present staff's report.
Thank you, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to subdivide two new family transfer parcels for the sister and son of Jonathan Atkins. So this request was submitted prior to the recent ordinance text amendment to update the regulations for family subdivisions within the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, the request was reviewed under the previous regulations, which is outlined in staff's report. So Mr. Atkins owns the subject parcel depicted above, which is located off of Loomis Road and is accessed by an existing ingress egress easement. The property is 87 acres in size, from which he proposes to subdivide a 1.38 acre parcel for his sister. Her name is Jacqueline Levon Atkins. And then also, he's proposing to subdivide a 1.26 acre parcel for his son, John Mitchell Atkins. Mr. Atkins and his wife did receive the property originally back in 2007. His sister and son have not previously received a family transfer parcel, thereby making them eligible for this request. I'm also going to see if this little laser pointer works. So the existing ingress egress easement is located along the southern portion of this parcel and then extends down this existing road down to Loomis Road. So these are the two proposed parcels outlined in blue. The lot dimensions and building setback lines for the proposed new lots are consistent with the underlying zoning district and have adequate area for a separate dwelling and drain field. Both parcels also front on a 50-foot ingress and egress easement to be established by this plat. The proposed easement extends to the existing easement, providing access from Loomis Road. A deed of gift for the grantees has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, which prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt, and a sworn affidavit was signed acknowledging that the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the grantees and to keep the family state within the immediate family. In summary, this request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision, therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2023-006. That does conclude my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this family transfer?
Morning, Mr. -- afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of this board. My name is Frank Rawls, Ferguson Rawls &amp; Reins, 332 West Constance Road, representing the Atkins family. It's not -- no need for me to extend this meeting by making any comments. I'm here to answer any questions you might have, as is Mr. Atkins. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Commissioners, comments? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move for approval of -- can we have a motion? 2023-006.
Second.
The second from Commissioner Hicks. Can we do this with a voice vote? Any discussion in the motion? Can we do this with a voice vote? All in favor of this request, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Rawls, Mr. Atkins, you have our approval to go ahead with this transfer. Congratulations. The next item on our agenda would be family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2023-008. Mr. Wyman?
Yes, sir. This is family transfer subdivision plat request, FTR 2023-008, submitted by Jesse J. Johnson, Jr., the applicant on behalf of William H. Rogers III, the property owner, who is requesting a family transfer subdivision pursuant to Section 31 514 of the Unified Development Ordinance to approve family transfer subdivision plat to create one new parcel on property located at 5824 Old Myrtle Road, tax map 23, parcel 25B. The affected property is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan identifies this property as being located within the Rural Agricultural Use District. When acting on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property located on 5824 Old Myrtle Road, zoning map 23, parcel 25B. Account number 253113300, FTR 2023-008. Staff Planner Amy Mervine will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Chairman, Planning Commissioners. This request before you today is to create one new family subdivision from William H. Rogers III to his brother, Kim H. Rogers. This property is located in the Rural Agricultural Use District. This request was submitted prior to the recent ordinance text amendment to update the regulations for family subdivisions within the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, the request was reviewed under the previous regulations outlined in staff's report. The subject property is 3.936 acres in size and Zoned A Agricultural and is surrounded by forested and single-family dwellings, also Zoned A. William H. Rogers III received sole ownership of the property by deed of gift in 2008. The applicant is proposing to create a 1.949 acre parcel for his brother, Kim H. Rogers, and William H. Rogers III will retain 1.798 acres as the residue parcel. The property has 343.62 feet frontage on Old Myrtle Road, and the plat shows the proposed drain field locations. A deed of gift for the guarantees has been prepared in conjunction with this plat, which prohibits the transfer of the property within 10 years of its receipt, and a sworn affidavit was signed acknowledging that the purpose of this family transfer is to provide separate places of residence for the guarantee and to keep the family state within the immediate family. This request meets the criteria for a family transfer subdivision, and therefore, staff recommends approval of FTR 2023-008 with conditions. This concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Kim Rogers, and I am the recipient of the deed of gift. This property has been in our family for four generations, and I would like to keep it that way. And we're just at a point right now that we just need to make a small division in this and hopefully keep things moving. Thank you very much. Have a great day.
Chair, I move approval of FTR 2023-008 with any conditions that Amy stated.
Second. Any discussion in the motion? Can we do this with a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Congratulations. This doesn't require any additional action. Congratulations. Okay, Commissioners and the public, this afternoon, we have, I think it's three, four, one, two, three, three. This afternoon, we have three public hearings, and the public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item to be rezoned today for the public hearing is a rezoning request, RZN 2024-001, The Point at Harborview. Mr. Wyman?
Sir, this is a rezoning request, RZN 2024-001, The Point at Harborview, submitted by Nancy Snyder, City of Suffolk Economic Development Authority applicant and property owner, in accordance with Section 31 304 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the City of Suffolk in order to amend the uses associated with the design criteria for The Point at Harborview development, approved as a part of rezoning request, RZN 2016-015, in order to allow for additional -- for an additional land use of utility facilities not otherwise enumerated, for property located at 6500 College Drive, zoning map 6, parcel 35. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, Zoned MUD, Mixed Use District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2024-001. Once again, Staff Planner Amy Mervine will present staff's report.
Good afternoon again, Chairman, Planning Commissioners. This rezoning request before you today is to amend the previously approved proffers associated with RZ 15-16 conditional to include utility facilities not specifically enumerated within the design guidelines at 6500 College Drive. The subject property is located within the North Growth Area, Mixed Use Core District -- Use District. This request has been submitted with a concurrent subdivision variance request, SBV 2023-002, and is contingent upon the approval of RZN 2024-001. The subject property is located in the MUD, Mixed Use Development Overlay District Conditional and the Special Corridor Overlay District. To the north of the subject property is undeveloped vegetated land, Zoned CP Commerce Park. To the south is the Interstate 664 Loop, Zoned M1 Light Industrial. To the east is VDOT Properties, Zoned CP Commerce Park, and the Nansman Treatment Plant, HRSD Swift Facility, Zoned M2 Heavy Industrial. To the west is Industrial Development, Zoned M1 Light Industrial, and various commercial-type developments, Zoned OI Office Institutional. This request has been submitted -- oh, I already read that, sorry. The applicant's request is to amend the previously approved proffers associated with the RZ 15-16 conditional to include the utility facilities not specifically enumerated use, the HRSD Swift, within the design guidelines. The conditional rezoning incorporates all the parcels shown here on this slide. This rezoning is only to amend the design guidelines to specifically allow these Swift stations as a permitted use -- land use at this property. One of the purposes of this rezoning is to allow HRSD to construct three recharge wells in the vicinity of the Nansman Treatment Plant and afford the ability to filter the treated wastewater to drinking water standards and then pump the treated water back into the ground table using recharge wells. The purpose of construction, the additional recharge stations, is for HRSD, which is implementing the Swift program to meet regulatory obligations from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. That believes the proposed request to amend the previously approved proffers within the design guidelines for the purpose of constructing the three Swift stations at 6500 College Drive, which is in the proximity of the Nansman Treatment Plant, is appropriate in this location. This would allow HRSD to treat additional wastewater and provide other related services to support the growth in Suffolk and throughout the region. Staff recommends approval of RZN 2024-001. This concludes my presentation, and I will sit by after the public hearing with any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Mervine. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Kevin Hughes. I'm the Deputy Secretary Treasurer of the Economic Development Authority. I'm here on behalf of the landowner. When you go through the master planning process and the rezoning that we did in 2018, a recharge well was not contemplated. We are working with HRSD to locate three, as Ms. Mervine mentioned. I don't really have much to add outside of that detailed staff report, but we're here to answer any questions you may have. We think we can accommodate this and still have a really high-class, Class A mixed-use development on this site. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Lauren Zorovinsky. I'm the Chief of Design and Construction for Swift for HRSD, here to answer any questions that you have regarding the project and the Swift program. We've appreciated the opportunity to work closely with the Economic Development Authority and the developer working in that area. It's been over a year of collaboration, and we really appreciate the work that we've done with them to make sure that we're reflecting the best in current development plan. And so I'm here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none and hearing none. Is anyone to speak in opposition? Again, not seeing anyone in this case. Not closed the public hearings. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to say that I had the opportunity to go out and look at the Swift operation, which was a test operation that HRSD had a few months ago, and it's really interesting because they're going to take septic tank or sewer water and convert it to a -- they treat it, and basically, these wells are wells that operate in reverse. They force the water, treated water, back into the aquifer, which I'm sure everybody has seen things about, you know, this area sinking because of the water that's being taken out of the aquifers that we're drinking and use every day. And if you ever have -- if you have the opportunity to go out there and see what's going on with HRSD, I'd encourage you to do that. They are expanding. One of the things I found out is that the HRSD in Newport News, at some point in time, they're going to be putting a -- they're going to be closing that plant in Newport News, which is right next to the Monitor Mary Mac Bridge Tunnel. And all of that sewage goes into the plant, which is in Suffolk, and it's going to be under the river, and it's going to come out there in Suffolk. So it's a great -- I think it's a great program. The only question I had about it was where these sites are located. There are three sites, and they're at the edge of The Point at Harborview. I'm a little bit familiar with it because I was on the EDA at the time, and it's almost like deja vu. And I'm glad things are coming along out there. Apartments are there, condos are there, and these will be at the borders, as you can see on the map, of the -- of where it's being developed. I think it's a great idea. Therefore, I'd like to make a motion to approve RZN 2024-001.
Okay, I have a motion. I have a second.
Second, the motion?
Okay, we got a second from Commissioner Staler. Any discussion in the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wyman, you call for the vote?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. Congratulations. I can't remember your names, but I remember Mr. Hughes, congratulations. This will go to City Council with approval from this body on March 20th in 2024. Okay, moving along.
Chair, may I ask a special request that we go to SBV 2023-002 next, since it's the variance upon which --
No, we're going to do that separately, and there's reasons, and you'll be advised later. It's been discussed, okay? Thank you. The next item is the conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-011, Barnes Road Wedding Venue. Mr. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-011, Barnes Road Wedding Venue, submitted by Brian Lane, Parish Lane Design Group agent, on behalf of Ronald D. Jordan, applicant and property owner, in accordance with Sections 31 306 and 31 406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a public assembly not otherwise enumerated on property located at 456 Barnes Road, zoning map 39, parcel 43. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A Agricultural Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Agricultural Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution approving a family transfer subdivision on property When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit request, CUP 2023-011. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report. And before she dives in, I did want to advise everyone that she will present a amended condition number one from staff's perspective to incorporate some exhibits, Exhibit C and D, as outlined. That's traditional. Do not find their way into that condition for your packets, but we are recommending compliance to the exhibit, and that's essentially what that would do. So when you make a motion on this, should you be inclined to recommend approval as amended with the conditions presented in front of you would be appropriate.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this request is for a conditional use permit to establish a public assembly use not otherwise enumerated. The parcel up for discussion is located within the Rural Agricultural Use District. The subject parcel is currently zoned agricultural and surrounded by fields, forested lands, and single-family dwellings, also zoned agricultural. Additionally, to the south of the parcel is the Norfolk Southern Railroad. The subject parcel is 12.83 acres in size and consists of a two-story, single-family dwelling, pool, and barn. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to operate a public assembly use not otherwise enumerated in order to establish a wedding venue on the subject parcel. The applicant is proposing to utilize the existing 1,600 square foot barn with a proposed 2,500 square foot addition while also utilizing one acre of the parcel for tents during events. The venue is proposed to hold up to 250 guests. However, occupancy shall be approved by the city's building official and fire marshal in accordance with applicable state building code requirements. The existing farmhouse will be offered for overnight stays, office management, hospitality area, changing area, as well as bride and groom suites. Overnight stays are permitted as an accessory use to the venue only. The requested hours of operation are Sunday through Thursday from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. and Friday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. No food is proposed to be prepared on-site, and alcohol will only be allowed by individual permits. The proposed use requires that a minimum of one parking space for every 50 square feet of gross floor area be provided. Based on the provided conceptual plan, a minimum of 42 parking spaces and a maximum of 63 parking spaces are required. The applicant is proposing to establish a gravel parking lot as permitted in accordance with Section 31-606, subsection A6, in the agricultural zoning district in order to accommodate the required parking. Based on the conceptual layout, adequate parking is provided for the proposed use. Additionally, the applicant has provided a landscaping exhibit to demonstrate how the parcel will be screened from adjoining property owners, as outlined in the attached Exhibit D. The Department of Public Works Engineering, Traffic, and Fire has reviewed the request and has expressed no concerns. Compliance with stormwater regulations will be reviewed at the time of development plan review. There is no city water or sewer within the area of the proposed development. Permitting for the well and septic system will require approval by the Virginia Department of Health and will be reviewed for compliance at the time of development plan review. Pursuant to Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance, a conditional use permit recognizes uses that because of their unique characteristics or potential impacts on adjacent land uses are not generally permitted in certain zoning districts as a matter of right. Rather, such uses are permitted through the approval of a conditional use permit by City Council when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. Staff has reviewed the conditional use permit approval criteria in Section 31-306, noting that entertainment-oriented uses, such as the proposed event venue, should not be interest to the enjoyment of surrounding residential uses when the right set of conditions are established. Staff has conditioned the hours of operation, as well as the hours for any outdoor music, to limit potential impacts related to noise. The operating hours, as previously stated, shall be limited to Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Friday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Additionally, all outdoor music shall be limited to the hours of Sunday through Monday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. The applicant is required to abide by all city regulations pertaining to sound control and noise. The proposed use is located approximately 700 feet from the nearest residential home and is expected to remain agricultural in nature by utilizing gravel parking and existing agricultural-style fencing. Additionally, as previously stated, the applicant has provided vegetative screening along Barnes Road and adjoining residential properties. Prior to the meeting, staff has placed at the dais a set of revised conditions for the application. The revised conditions are to amend condition number one in order to incorporate that the proposed use shall be in substantial conformance with the attached Exhibits C and D. Therefore, when making your recommendation, please do so based on the revised conditions. Staff finds that the proposed use of a public assembly not otherwise enumerated meets the criteria for conditional use permits set forth in Section 31-306 and 31-406 of the UDO. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of CUP 2023-011 with the revised conditions. This concludes my presentation. If you have any questions after the public hearing, I'm available.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. We'll now open the public hearing on the conditional use request, CUP 2023-011 Barnes Road Wedding. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman, Commissioners, Staff. My name is Brian Lane. I'm here on behalf today for this application. I am the agent of the application, and I'm happy to say that for about the past year, we've worked diligently with staff to get to where we are today, and that's with a recommendation of approval. We have the operator who was going to be here today, but he's out of town currently. But I'm going to do my best to answer any questions that y'all may have. Now, I'm not going to bore you with the details of the application because it has been very well-vetted, but I am here to try and answer any question that you may have that could be from the technical standpoint. I would like to say that the operator and the owners did reach out to the few landowners who are adjacent to the site and live in the area, and they have been supportive of what we are trying to do. It is going to be a venue that I think the city would be proud of. If you have any questions, please let me know. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Lane. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request?
Council, my name is John Outland. I live to the north of the property at 280 Barnes. I'm not opposed to it, but I do have a few concerns, and I would like to be no amplified sounds past 10:00 p.m. and no amplified sounds over 85 decibels after 9:00 p.m. I'd like no amplified external sounds on Sundays or holidays. And no amplified interior sounds over 85 decibels on Sundays or holidays. And this is the wishes of myself and my wife. Also, when people come out to the country, they think it's a prime opportunity to start shooting. And I have no problem with occasional, you know, folks with residents, whatever, they get out there, they shoot. I shoot myself. But my fear is that this will become a shooting venue, so I'm against that. And also, the last thing is I'd like to see all traffic directed to Brentwood, which is right next to it, to the south, and go out to the highway. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Is anyone speaking in opposition? Hearing none? Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm Mary Jane Casey. I live at 6922 Brentwood Road. I'm one of the closest houses to this. I'd like to see Ronnie sell his property, but I'm concerned about the noise. 85 decibels is a lot. It's like a air compressor when you use in your building or something, and it drives you out. So I would like some assurance that there's going to be some kind of mitigation for the noise, you know, sound barrier or something, because I don't want to be listening to noise at 10 o'clock at night. I want to be listening to the frogs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Casey. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Hearing none, close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion? Huh? Rebuttal? I'm sorry. Mr. Lane?
Thank you, Chairman. Yes, I would like to address the noise comments. And on the noise comments, we are making it a condition that where we will work with the state laws and with the noise standards. I'm not here today to offer to lower that timeframe. We feel like that timeframe's adequate. We haven't been notified of this before, so I would like to rest on the conditions that we have in front of you today, Sunday to Thursday, 9 to 10, and Friday to Saturday, 9 to 11. I'll be more than happy to reach out with the concerned citizens with whatever your recommendation is today, but we would like to go ahead and keep this project moving forward in this application. Thank you.
Okay. Now I can close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Ms. Lane, I have a question. In looking at the layout, I don't see any landscaping, trees, anything, because I know in an open area like that, sometimes if you plant certain vegetation, it'll buffer some sounds, particularly when they are not right adjacent to the properties. Will there be some landscaping done, adding trees and buffer, something to buffer the sounds?
Could you make those comments closer to the mic?
It's hard to see, but if you look on the landscaping exhibit provided as Exhibit D, and now it doesn't want to work, they have vegetative screening proposed along the adjoining property owners or the property lines, as well as along Barnes Road. And then also, as a part of our site plan review, there is a percentage of tree canopy that is required as a part of any site plan development that we review, so we would look for that compliance as well.
Ms. Collier?
Stand.
Any other question for Ms. Collier or Ms. Lane, while he's at the podium?
Yes, thank you so much. I have a quick question about this property. In the village, which is to the, based off the map to the east, is, would this be permitted in the village? This kind of designed of what we wanted to do?
Okay, I'm checking with the zoning administrator. Hold on one second. It would still need a conditional use permit.
In the village? Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, I was going to try and add to that. It is part of the, your package in front of you today on Exhibit D, and we did label it landscape plan. And not only was it a requirement, but it was also something that we wanted to provide because one of the comments that did come up with these wedding venues, there are music, there is dancing, it will happen. So we negotiated with the time and pushed the time back from what the owners really wanted to do. So we have leveled it off. I do not want to stand in front of you today and look cavalier by no means. We have arrived at this point with a lot of diligence, but the screening is for that purpose, to also provide additional. And we had looked at maybe buring that also to get it elevated, because we are going to have to dig a retention pond, and that dirt needs to go somewhere. Thank you.
11 with the 15 conditions.
That's with the amended conditions, right? Okay. It's 15, okay. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Got a second from Commissioner Moore. Any discussion in the motion?
Could I ask a question? Sorry, if I ask a question of Mr. Lane, I know I might have missed that part. Can I ask a question to that, or have I missed that opportunity?
Ask your question.
Okay. I just wanted to know what other, and it may be in it, and I'm sorry if I missed it, wedding venue, but also, is there a long list of other events that can be held? Like, how open-ended is that?
It would be for, the way we classify a wedding event venue is what we call a public assembly, not otherwise enumerated. So it would be, they would be able to have any type of assembly event like that that falls under that definition.
And if I understand correctly, the fire marshal is who decides, like, where they can cap the occupancy?
Ultimately, occupancy will be determined at the time of what we call CO, the certificate of occupancy, by the building official in collaboration with the fire marshal as well.
Yeah, very quick. We had something similar like this at the double R event. Is that correct? We had a similar venue like this. Is it still operational? Is it still operating?
No, that venue has been sold, and I'm not sure where it stands now.
If it's been sold and they've not had an active business license on that property for a period of two years or greater, then it would be null and void, the existing CUP. But they did at one time have a CUP for a similar operation.
And it passed City Council?
Yes.
It did. I just say this about things like this. Things like this evolve, and once they evolve, things usually go outside of the lines. And then we always get another vote about changing the rules, usually two or three years later. So I understand it. Everything's with it, it's fine. I get it. But the truth of the matter is places like these usually start out with a promise, and then you go outside the lines, and then we're here to redo it. So I'm not too hip on it. Excuse my jargon.
Okay, thank you. If there's another discussion, Commissioner Wyman, you call for the vote.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote.
Then come up.
Oh. All right. We're having issues with the voting machine. Give me one moment. Heard our media team has advised me, we may have to do a voice vote.
Do this with a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Opposition?
No.
So we have?
A roll call.
Roll call, okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Bauer? Oh, yay is in favor of approval.
Yay, thank you.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yay.
Commissioner Edwards?
Commissioner Edwards? Oh, just thinking.
He's in deep thought.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commissioner Goodman?
Yay.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yay.
Vice Chairman Staler?
Yay.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion's approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lane, congratulations. This will go with approval from this body to City Council on 3/20/24. Thank you. The next item on our agenda would be subdivision variance request. The next item on our agenda would be subdivision variance request, SBV 2023-002 HRSD Boat Harbor. Ms. Wyman, you read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Subdivision variance request, SBV 2023-002 HRSD Boat Harbor, submitted by Jay Burness, HRSD applicant on behalf of the Economic Development Authority, property owner in accordance with Sections 31308 and 31515 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a variance to Table 407-1, Dimensional Standards of Section 31407 of the Unified Development Ordinance in order to grant relief from the minimum frontage requirements for a new lot on property located at 6500 College Drive, Zoning Map 6, Parcel 35. The purpose of this request is to grant relief from the specified development standards of the Unified Development Ordinance as it relates to the development of a boat harbor treatment plant. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough Zoned MUD Mixed Use Development Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area, Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to subdivision variance request, SBV 2023-002. Once again, Staff Planner Amy Mervine will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This subdivision variance request before you today is to grant a variance to the lot layout standards of Section 31-605 of the Unified Development Ordinance, subsection G, in order to grant relief from the minimum required frontage standard at 6500 College Drive. This request was submitted concurrently with rezoning RZN 2024-001. The subject property is located within the North Growth Area, Mixed Use Core Use District. In cases of unusual situations, or when strict adherence to the general regulations would result in practical difficulties or hardship, City Council, upon the recommendation of the Planning Commission, may authorize exceptions to the subdivision regulations as stated in Section 31-515 of the UDO. The subject property is located in the MUD Mixed Use Development Overlay District, Conditional, and the Special Corridor Overlay District. To the north of the subject property is developing parcels zoned MUD Mixed Use Development, Conditional. To the south is the Interstate 664 Loop, Zoned M1 Light Industrial. To the east is the Nansman Treatment Plant, HRSD Swift Facility, Zoned M2 Heavy Industrial. To the west is Industrial Development, Zoned M1 Light Industrial, and various commercial-type developments, Zoned OI Office Institutional. The applicant's request is to grant a subdivision variance in accordance with Section 31-605, Lot Layout Standards of the UDO, subsection G, Minimum Required Frontage Standard, which establishes that every parcel shall have usable frontage on a fully dedicated public street, accepted and maintained by the city or the Virginia Department of Transportation. HRSD is proposing the creation of two parcels for the development of two recharge well stations for the HRSD Swift Program. The subject property is adjacent to Interstate 664 and is west of the Nansman Treatment Plant. The proximity of the Nansman Treatment Plant is viable to the construction of the new recharge wells for the purpose of the HRSD Swift Project. The location of the proposed swift stations abut Interstate 664 and the associated ramp, which are not considered usable frontages. Internal easements to access these parcels are proposed and shown here on this slide. Based on these factors, it is staff's opinion that the conditions in which the variance is being sought are indeed unique and not generally applicable to other properties. Staff believes the proposed request to grant a subdivision variance to the lot layout standards in order to grant relief from the minimum required frontage standard of the UDO for the purpose of creating two parcels for the construction of two recharge wells for the HRSD Swift Program at 6500 College Drive is appropriate in this location. Staff recommends approval of SBV 2023-002 with the conditions stated within the staff report. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand for questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Mervine. I will now open the public hearing on subdivision variance request, SVBV 2023-002. Who would like to comment in favor of this request?
Lauren Zaravinsky with HRSD. Just again, wanted to offer that I'm here for any questions, and I appreciate your consideration of this subvariance, the variance request. Thank you.
No question, Mr. Hughes? No comments? Okay, good. Anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Anyone to speak in opposition? I haven't heard none. I have not closed the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chair, I listened attentively, and I was trying to figure out why we couldn't move it where I wanted it to go. But since we didn't, we're right here, so I will move. I will move. Approval of SBV, what is the number? The variance request with the, SBV 2023-002 with the two conditions.
I'll second it.
Any discussion in the motion?
I don't know whether this is a discussion of the motion, but can I ask Lauren to come up? I have a question about the, where these are located. And I know that the test well has already been functioning for the swift. Has any studies been done about the, we're back to the noise levels? Because this area, if you've been out there, if you had the opportunity to go there, it's partially built out with residential apartments primarily, and soon to be commercial businesses and things like that. My only concern is, from the noise standpoint, these, the wells that are going to be there, how much noise is it, do they put out, the pump stations?
So the building itself will house a single pump and the electrical equipment and other facilities, needed monitoring equipment. That pump is called a backflush pump. It pulls water out once a day for about a half hour to an hour. So it'll only operate, each location will only operate once a day for between 30 to 60 minutes. During that time, it's still be within and enclosed through the whole building. So typically, the decibels within 20 feet from that building are not, they're perceivable, but it's not loud. It is not a loud application. We've worked with other locations to make sure that we have sound dampening within that building to make sure that it is not an issue elsewhere. So we would be more than willing and planning to do that really here as well.
Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Does that, okay, good. Mr. Wyman, would you call for the vote, please?
See if this works for us. Commissioners, please vote.
Nope.
Oh, it, oh, it worked.
Mine didn't work anyway.
Okay, everyone, all right, we'll clear that. Okay, we'll do a roll call. Yes is in favor and no is opposed. Commissioner Bauer?
Yes.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks? Vice Chairman Staler?
Yes.
And Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Congratulations. This will go to City Council with approval from this body on March 20. Thanks for your participation. Do we have any old business to be discussed? Under the new business, we have two items. Do we need to have a motion before we bring them up?
Yes, to amend the agenda to add an additional item, yes, sir.
Okay. I'll take a motion from the commissioners to add to the agenda. Was it one item or two items?
It would be two separate ordinance text amendments.
Text amendments, okay.
Oh, so moved.
Second.
Oh, okay. I'm moved that we add two items to, would this be for our March meeting or for today? Just for today?
This would be for today. We'll discuss them.
Two items for discussion, public hearing on sign regulations and cluster subdivision regulations.
Second, got a second.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone in pause? Okay. So we can add two items, text amendments, to the new business? And you going to give us a briefing on that?
Yes, sir. We'll give you a briefing on that, and we'll do that after the comprehensive plan update. I don't be, but.
You going to move it down there?
Oh, we'll move it down there, yes, sir.
So let's do the staff report. Item A, significant land use items. Rezoning request, RZN 2023-005, Pitch Kettle Landing.
Yes, sir. We have two significant land use items that we wanted to bring to your attention this month. Those will be before you, tentatively, as a public hearing item at your next meeting. The first is rezoning request, RZN 2023-005, conditional, this is called Pitch Kettle Landing. This is for property that is north of Pitch Kettle, just east of the, I'm sorry, just west of the Preservate Lake Mead Subdivision, and north of the Foxfield Meadows Subdivision, and east of the Route 58 bypass. It's a parcel that is just north of 65 acres. Currently, it is one parcel, even though it doesn't appear that way, but it is split-zoned. Back in, I believe, 2009, 2006, so a little later than that, it was conditionally rezoned, the entire property, to RU CP, which is our Commerce Park Zoning District, and ONI, which is Office Institutional. And you can see all of those outlined there. Ultimately, at that time, what it was zoned for was for up to 179 age-restricted multifamily units, or just single townhomes, and 20,000 square feet of office space. Since, we've been approached by a developer who wishes to rezone the entire parcel to RC, that's our Residential Compact Zoning District, to make way for 335 single-family attached units. Those are townhomes. Here, you have the conceptual layout. It is within our inner-ring suburban use district, where a density of 6 to 12 units per acre is recommended. The overall density as proposed in this request would be just below that, at 5.7 units per acre. Previously, the townhomes that were to be age-restricted on this property, or at least as it exists currently, that would have resulted in a density of roughly five units per acre. So it's a moderate increase in density across the entire property there. The second request that we wanted to bring to your attention today as part of our significant land use items is the Parkwood rezoning. This is rezoning request, RZN 2024-002. This is for property on Carolina Road, and there are two pieces to this. One that triggers the significant land use threshold internal policy, and the other that is an accompanied application. But here you have the parcel. You may recognize this is the current Farmer Joe's property. You can see that building at the very southern portion of the property, at Carolina Road. That is the Farmer Joe's building. You may have heard that the developer in this case is working with Paul D. Camp to convey a portion of the property to them to leverage that existing building, once rehabbed, for a vocational and technical school. That requires a conditional use permit. But the balance of the property, which is currently zoned B2 and M2, they are seeking a rezoning to RU 18. That's a residential urban zoning district with a max density of 18 units per acre. Here, we have a conceptual layout. Ultimately, what they wish to do is construct 225, a mix of 225 single-family attached products, townhomes, and multifamily on the site. So these two rezonings, as well as the conditional use permit for the vocational school, will come before you next month for public hearing.
And the next item would be the 2020, I'm sorry, 2020, 2045 Comprehensive Plan Update.
Yes, we are, we're excited to get to this point. We are back before City Council tomorrow during our work session as we unveil our first draft of the plan for public review and comment this afternoon as a follow-up to the conversation we had with you last month about our land use process and how we're kind of revamping that as we move into this update of the 2045 plan. Today, we're going to discuss with you growth areas and what those may look like. So with that being said, our Comprehensive Planning Manager and Project Manager for the Comp Plan Update, Keith Kennedy, will present to you with an update.
Thank you, Kevin, and good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. As Kevin mentioned, we've really got a couple of purposes we'll spend some time on this afternoon. One is to bring you up to date on where we are in the process. We've made a lot of progress in the last couple of months, and we'll be busy over the next couple of months rolling out a draft plan and getting additional comments. So I want to share some important dates with you. But as Kevin also mentioned, give you what I would call kind of a high-level overview of the growth area expansion recommendation that this plan contains. Probably one of the most important recommendations in the plan. So I'll give you a little background on where that recommendation came from, how it fits in to previous efforts and strategies around growth. What are some of the things driving that recommendation? And then again, finally, identify that recommendation for you and some next steps in the process. I want to say upfront, there's a lot of information that goes into this recommendation, as you can probably imagine. So thankfully, this information will be available to the public. As we've projected, later this week, we'll be briefing council, as Kevin mentioned, tomorrow, and then revealing online the draft plan itself, as well as an online tool that you can use to comment on the draft. So a lot to absorb. I'll keep it at a pretty high level this afternoon. About a two-year process, it looks like, from beginning to end, to get this comprehensive plan completed. A lot of folks have been involved in this from the very beginning, whether it's at a staff level, consultant team, members of the public. So a lot of good work has gone into this effort over the last couple of years. And one of the things that has affected our schedule very much is the need to involve the community in this process. We've actually taken a number of additional steps in this project to keep it on the minds of the community and make sure that we're listening and getting good feedback. We actually started in the spring and summer of 2022 with a number of focus group meetings. We took advantage shortly after that of some well-intended, typically, community events and let people know that this was underway. We've had about a 20-person steering committee meeting throughout this process. They will actually also be meeting this week. We held an additional set of community meetings back in January and February of last year. This was the topic of the City Council Retreat last year in 2023. And we've got an additional round of open house events coming up in March, and I will identify those dates for you. So that has really been a big part of this project going forward, and will continue as we wrap things up here in the next couple of months. One of the things that we think is important to keep in mind is this is actually the fourth plan in a series of plans that have attempted to manage growth in Suffolk over about a 25-year period. When you look back, starting with the plan adopted by council in 1998, these growth management themes were critical to that plan. And a growing population has been a continuing theme for Suffolk in that 25-year period. And the, a growing population has been a continuing theme for Suffolk in that 25-year period. These are actually taken from those documents. This was the 2006 plan adopted by City Council. Again, those same themes were there. And of course, population was projected to grow at that time as well. So coming up to the current plan, 2035, those themes are very evident in this document. And we are simply updating and building on those themes in this update going forward. So if you look back over that history, you see a series of changes in the growth area boundaries that were adopted by City Council. This will actually be included in the document showing how those boundaries changed over that time period. Again, the northern growth area having a little bit of adjustment during that period and the central growth area as well. And if you know your geography a little bit, this is really where that continued growth is going to have to go. The northern growth area virtually landlocked, and that's kind of been the case of the history as well as the process going forward. And once again, we're looking at the best available population projections for Suffolk and finding, again, we're expected to grow perhaps even faster than what we've experienced in the past. So this again is a major driver for the update of the plan and the questions that we have to ask ourselves about the growth area boundary. Something a little bit new this time around is expansion, really explosive growth at the port. The Port of Virginia has really been a driver for economic development across the state and certainly within the city of Suffolk as well. Projected to grow in port volume substantially. And in fact, that's exactly what happened as predicted back in 2020. So two big drivers that we had to consider in evaluating this growth area boundary. Another critical theme mentioned all throughout that 25-year period is to coordinate growth with infrastructure. And I'm going to just touch on a couple of those items for you. And again, this has been a big part of the message that we're getting out. This is from the open house sessions back in June. Coordinate transportation and development decisions. And you find out, when you look back at that history of investment in infrastructure and where those projects are located, very, very closely tied to the growth area boundaries and their expansion over that period of time. Same is true, of course, with water and sewer utilities, very much tied to the growth patterns in the city. Here's a map showing you where the water distribution network is in relation to that existing growth area boundary and the sewer facilities as well. Again, we're talking about urban and suburban development, which require those kinds of utilities. And those are big inputs as we think about where that boundary should go going forward. So we talked about, back in June, what are our opportunities in Suffolk for this particular update going forward for responding to those drivers of growth, the population and the port expansion? And again, we kind of reinforced and went back to those key themes. Focus growth in those growth areas, those two major areas in the city. Again, promote investment where the utilities already exist, specifically in downtown area in North Suffolk. We also talked about the job growth opportunities that were coming our way and the need to think about, particularly given the types of employment opportunities that we're seeing, the opportunities along the corridors going south and west out of the central growth area along 460 and 58. So we produced this kind of a basic map at that time to give folks a sense of, okay, what are we thinking about as we look at the growth area boundary? And we identified those corridors. We looked at also the area between the two growth area boundaries as a possibility. And again, reinforcing the need to reinvest in North Suffolk and the downtown area as well. So from that fairly fuzzy map came something a little bit more specific. And we started to look at, what are the opportunities out those corridors? What does that area look like? And evaluated actually six different options internally at a staff level with input from this commission and council and looked at those six different options in some detail. You know, as I show here in a couple of aerial photographs. Looked at what's underneath that growth area boundary. Are utilities available? What's the transportation network like? Here showing the one in the North Suffolk area, again, sort of connecting those two growth area boundaries as one of our options to consider. Again, we looked at options around the central growth area where the going north as well as west and south on 460 and 58 were looked at. This is the 460 corridor. We looked at the option here shown in yellow. And looked at kind of natural boundaries to see what area ultimately makes the most sense. We looked at a smaller expansion that's shown here in yellow with 460 as the center of that area bounded by the reservoir to the north and the wetland area and creek to the south, but going all the way out to the county line. Area C, expanding that a little bit further to the south to the next rail line to see if that was an option that we should consider. Again, similarly, looking at the 58 corridor, looking at the rail lines going west out of the existing growth area boundary for a couple of different options. Again, looking specifically at opportunities for employment types of uses in these areas of the city. Looking at a smaller option, one that goes out even a little bit further, option E. We were also asked to look at the corridor going north out of the growth area. This is Godwin Boulevard going north as a potential residential expansion area in the growth area. So finally, we ended up with five of those areas as we felt like a good fit for the growth that we were seeing. Option A, B, D, and F are what's recommended in the document that you'll see later this week. And we applied, as discussed at your last update, a future land use plan to both the current growth area as well as the optional areas that we were identified. So all of this information will be coming out this week and available online to comment on and get some feedback. Again, these are ideas right now. These are recommendations that staff is putting forward here, looking a little bit closer at the northern growth area boundary that's proposed and the central growth area boundary that's proposed as well. So we've even got this map online so that you can pick a particular property or an area and comment on, well, first of all, see what's proposed and also provide comments on your thoughts about that going forward. And this is sort of what going forward looks like. Of course, the update today, as Kevin mentioned, a summary presentation at City Council's work session tomorrow. We will be meeting with our steering committee Thursday evening. Again, a very similar message. Spread the word on what we're recommending and what's behind the recommendations and encourage people to come out and participate in this last round. So we've actually made the arrangements for three open house events. March 13th, 14th, that's evening during the week. And March 16th, that's another Saturday morning event here at City Hall. Again, to put the details out there, give folks a chance to see what's being recommended and provide us with your feedback. We'll continue to keep you all in the council up to date through March and April. What are we hearing? Are there needs to update things or the things we forgot that we didn't include in our analysis that we need to consider going forward? And then come back, we're projecting in the spring or summer timeframe with a public hearing for action on this document. And then we do the real work, which is implementing these plans going forward until the next round. So, Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes that quick overview. Happy to answer any questions that you all may have.
Any question, Mr. Kennedy, as he at the podium? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Now we're going to go to this amendment that we just voted on. And this is quickly text at this point?
Yes, sir. So we were going to discuss two items. One, we'd been working on for quite a bit with our Committee on Ordinances as it relates to our cluster design standards. We thought it would be beneficial to provide an overview for you all today. And should you be inclined to move forward with a recommendate or move forward with a motion that would get it on your agenda next month for a public hearing, that would be, you know, at your leisure. But the first, as a high-growth locality in the Commonwealth of Virginia, we are required to authorize cluster subdivisions. Some localities call them open space subdivisions, but essentially it is, allows some flexibility in design requirements, lot layouts and things like that to cluster your lots together to maximize open space. The state enables us to create design standards at the local governing bodies discretion to ensure that these cluster developments are of high quality. And we have, last count, I think about 24 or 25 design standards related to residential development within these cluster subdivisions. Some of them are a little antiquated. Some of them could be refined or enhanced. And we've been working on those. So with that being said, Meg Pittinger, our Assistant Director of Planning, is going to walk us through what we're thinking currently. And it will be open for some feedback.
Thank you, Kevin. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, members of Planning Commission. Thank you for that introduction there, Kevin. You know, the staff has been working with the Committee on Ordinances for a while now on these design standards. We think we finally got them to a point where, you know, should Planning Commission deem necessary that we bring it before Planning Commission for action at a subsequent meeting. So I want to walk you through kind of where we are and then what some of the proposed changes are. So as Kevin indicated, state code authorizes locality, in fact, requires because Suffolk is a high-growth locality, which is defined as a population growth of 10% or more from the last census to the one previous to that. And that we must provide provisions for cluster or open space subdivisions, which we do, Suffolk does. And you can see the language there, you know, in the state code. And it does allow you the locality to have criteria. So it's not just that you can't have criteria to go along with that. And in the UDO, in Section 31-411, Use Patterns, this is where there are the zoning requirements for these non-conventional subdivisions, and cluster is one of those. And then in the 30, Section 31-411E, subsection E10, that's where the design standards are for the cluster subdivisions. So here's the definition, you know, it basically is clustering, hence the name, the lots together, the dwellings together, and there's a corresponding reduction in lot area, but also generally an increase in the preservation of open space, which is a kind of a win-win thing. It does result in reduced cost for both the developer and the locality. But it's important to note that these do not increase the residential density because the density of the overall lot, of the overall area to be developed remains the same. You're just taking those lots, those dwellings, and putting them in a tighter area. So here are some of the benefits. Again, increases land that is held in open space perpetually. Smaller lot sizes, so there's less infrastructure and maintenance costs. No overall increase in density, again, I want to stress that. And there's flexibility, particularly when there are environmental features. And anybody who's been in Suffolk for more than a minute knows that there is a lot of wetlands and otherwise sensitive areas that you need to work around if you want to have development. And certainly, we want to, as good environmental stewards, protect those areas. So as we walk through the standards there, and Kevin said there's about, I was looking, but it's Roman numerals. And, you know, it's been a long time since, you know, like whenever elementary school, middle school, that I had to do Roman numerals. But there's about 25. There are some that we're proposing to eliminate, right? One of them is that the corner lots shall have side entry garages. This is an item that kept being brought up to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a variance because it can be difficult to arrange the lot pattern that way. So we're proposing to eliminate that and just allow the developer to, you know, put the garage where it makes sense. And, you know, carports shall be structurally integrated into the same materials. Again, all the materials of the structure are going to have to have that same design standard. So we felt like eliminating that entire sentence made sense. We put in here to eliminate, propose to eliminate, that not more than 50% of the homes shall be one-story. Again, to let the developer decide what makes sense, let the market dictate what makes sense rather than dictating that upfront. And same with this size requirement, minimum size requirement. Some would argue that having a minimum size requirement is going to increase the cost and then becomes not affordable, can be an equity issue. So again, we're proposing to reduce that and let the market dictate what, you know, what is sellable. And then this item about trash cans and recycling bins be completely screened. Again, kind of, you know, I mean, in a single-family neighborhood and lots, and that's what these are going to be, people are going to put the trash can around the back. Trying to eliminate things that don't necessarily need to be regulated. HOAs in general will also have these requirements that we can let them deal with that rather than having to send a city inspector out there to like write somebody a ticket for the trash can being out by the garage. That's not really good, you know, use of city resources. HOAs are generally going to be worse than city staff on doing that. So we're proposing to take all of these four out. These other, these three, again, fencing, there's some standards about fencing. We felt like the fencing standards that are already in the UDO were sufficient to regulate this. No need to sort of repeat that. When you have repeated ordinance requirements, you sometimes run the risk of having them not comply with each other. So I thought it was better to just take that out and let fencing be regulated under the rest of the UDO. This one about chimneys being brick or stone, I think the intention there was to not have them be wrapped in vinyl. I don't think we're seeing, I don't think you're seeing as many chimneys in fireplaces anymore. So again, determined to be not really an issue to be concerned about. And then this statement about harmonious use of building materials be required through due restrictions. Again, they're pretty much, you know, HOAs are going to do that. And the rest of the design standards will allow for that and require that. So again, we felt like that that was kind of an unnecessary regulation. So we're also proposing to change a few of the regulations. This one about primary entryways and landings having a minimum of 24 square feet. We're proposing to combine that with the item below that we're modifying slightly. So basically just saying, you know, primary entryways, porches, landings visible from public areas shall be covered with a roof, so you have to have covered porch, and shall have a minimum area of 24 feet. So again, essentially just combining those two. We're adding this item about windows and doors. So there was some discussion in the committee about, you know, about windows on the side facades and rear facades that you can't see. And, you know, that kind of puts challenges on how you design the inside of the building. So we're proposing to modify that to state basically that the side and rear facades that are facing a public street, those need to have not more than, or not less than 8% windows or doors. But those side, you know, areas that are facing another house, facing the rear that are not visible, we don't care. So kind of just put that little clarification in there that to leave it, because I think you don't want a blank wall of, you know, siding facing a public street. I don't think that's very attractive. And the idea behind the cluster subdivisions is to make them be attractive, make them, you know, be an enticing area there. So keeping that in there, but clarifying that facing a public street is where that be, where they will be required. So this is probably the item that garnered the majority or the largest portion of the discussion is about exterior materials. Getting down to the grade of vinyl that can be allowed currently. Can't use vinyl except on accent and trim pieces. So we're proposing to add that premium-grade vinyl and specifying 0.046 inches or greater in thickness. in thickness, maybe use, providing that two or more patterns, so you don't just have just, you know, one slab that is all the same, be used on each structure. And then just clarifying there, instead of saying high-grade, say premium-grade, to kind of keep the language the same. You know, there's some discussion about the thickness. Should it be thinner? Should it be thicker? Is it available? So that's something that Planning Commission can kind of think about, you know, figure out. We've got some samples, you know, that kind of shows some different things, but .046 is where we kind of landed. It's kind of a mid-grade between your real low end, you know, and something that starts pushing the price into something that's less affordable. And then skirting of foundations, again, I'm kind of mostly clarifying this. You know, we thought that it was important for that upgraded appearance to keep the brick or stone, but allowing that parge or stucco coatings would also be appropriate, right? So you're not just having blank cinder blocks, bare cinder blocks, to, you know, get that upgraded appearance. If you don't, if they don't want to do brick or stone or stone-faced block, you know, allowing that. And then again, on all exposed sides so that, you know, where, again, where you're seeing it. So the next steps would be a recommendation for Planning Commission to, for staff to draft an actual ordinance for your consideration and then bring that back at a subsequent meeting for the full Planning Commission to take action on. And with that, I will ask, or Kevin, will answer any questions that you might have and be willing to, more than willing to go back to any of the items that you have questions on.
Misses, do you have any questions?
Question about the window door requirement. I think it's a great item to consider. How did you come up with that 8%? Just out of curiosity?
That's what's currently in the code.
Okay.
8% is currently in the code, and it's in the rest of the UDO as well for single-family development. In other localities, I've seen 10% actually be a standard in there. So that's what's actually in the code. But again, the reduction that we're proposing is to have it only be on those sides facing a public street.
Okay, so the 8% stays on, just for the, okay. Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
So again, basically, if you're on a corner lot and you have a side facing a public street, that would need to have windows. If you're an interior lot, we don't care. Put windows, don't put windows. Yep. Good question.
After your motion, Mrs. Kennedy.
Well, one more item that we wanted to discuss, and this will be very brief, but I hope that drive it through the community over the last month. You may have seen our new and improved public hearing notice signs. I actually have one, I could bring it out and do some show and tell. But it's larger. We believe it conveys the message much more effectively than our previous signs, which were essentially small, four-square-foot, yeah, 40 by 40 signs. That were blue, they blended in, and they didn't tell you a lot of information. They were actually kind of hard to read. So with that being said, an item that we wanted to discuss more broadly is with the new and improved signs, which in all honesty are much more expensive for the city, not the only reason we're asking this, but they're just more effective in conveying the information out there. One of our UDO requirements, this is not a state requirement to post the site, this is a UDO requirement, requires that one sign per every 500 feet of road frontage be posted. We think that now would be probably a good opportunity to revisit that, considering the effectiveness of the new signs. So we've been kicking around the idea of what that linear footage is of road frontage. Is it, do we cut it in half? Do we, you know, cut it by two-thirds? Because the signs are just that much larger and with that contain so much more information. Now we know when the public hearing is going to be. We know what the request is for. You have a website to go to to get all the information. So we're pleased with where we are now currently with the new signs, but we also look at it as an opportunity to take advantage of their effectiveness by reducing the sheer number of them. So that's something we wanted to bring to your all's attention. We are open to ideas for discussion, but this would be a relatively simple change, I believe, to Article III of the Unified Development Ordinance, which outlines that requirement for public hearings. This is anything that comes before you and City Council as a public hearing on a land use item, we're required to post it. So we can draft an ordinance for your consideration next month and provide some research as it relates to the number as well that we choose.
I'll just add that we have been discussing at the Ordinance Committee the cluster subdivision regulations at several of our meetings, and I think it would be good for us to go ahead and make a motion that we have a recommendation from the, go ahead. No, I thought if somebody says, make a recommendation from the planning staff dealing with the sign regulations, dealing with the posted signs for these projects, as well as cluster subdivision regulation, modifications and changes. Do that with one motion or two motion? Do it either way you want, Mr. Chairman. Two motions, okay. And make a motion that the planning staff present to the Planning Commission at its March meeting, recommendations for sign regulation changes. Second.
For discussion, can you satisfy my nosiness? I want to see the sign.
You haven't seen it?
No, I haven't.
Before we move on from that.
I didn't see it.
Could we have the motion clarified that it's public hearing sign regulations?
Public hearing sign regulations, yes. Public hearing. Thank you. Second motion. Discussion and motion. We're going to see the sign. We need to see the sign before we vote?
Yeah, we need to see.
I don't need to see the sign, I'm just.
We want to see it. Bring him the sign.
Do my best stand away.
You're going to be able to see it.
My sister's here.
You will be able to see it.
Oh, my.
Oh, Lord.
Can't miss that.
Can't miss that. Jumps out at you. I might make a comment if anybody in the future says that they didn't see any signs, then they might need the eyes checked.
Might want to add lights to that.
Glasses as well. Quite great.
Do we have a motion and a second? We need to call a roll. Can we take a voice vote on this one?
As long as nobody says nay, it's good.
Voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone's opposition? Opposition? Okay. And the other motion will be for the cluster division now. Design. Yes, I make a motion for us to have a public hearing and the planning staff present us a recommendation for ordinance changing dealing with cluster subdivision regulations. Second motion. Okay. Discussion and motion. Did we do this with a voice vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposition? Okay. So that's going, and then we can move to the next item on the agenda then, sir.
Yes, sir.
And that's going to be the status report of City Council of January 17th.
Yes, sir. So there were four public hearings presented before City Council at their January 17th, 2024, meeting. The first, you may recall, was the Switchgrass Solar Project to get ACUP for a large amount of property there on Hosier Road. Prior to the public hearing, that was withdrawn by the applicant. The second item was the Pinner House Bed and Breakfast. They were proposing to amend some of their conditions to allow for more bedrooms to be utilized, as well as to allow for a cafe. That was approved with the conditions as recommended. The Capital Concrete Project requests for a conditional use permit to essentially reestablish a ready-mixed concrete plant on property there on Portsmouth Boulevard. This is in conjunction to the Vulcan Materials Site that exists. That was approved with the staff-recommended conditions. And lastly, we outlined not that long ago some ordinance text amendment provisions that impact our family transfer process. In a nutshell, this was to allow for family trusts to participate in the process. That was approved by City Council as well. And that concludes the status update, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Any comments by commissioners? Mr. Chairman, I would like to recognize that a member of the Planning Commission, I understand, for 22 years in the past, passed away, Charles Shotten. And I know he was well-known in the community and did a lot of community service as well as being quite a golfer, but anyway, he did pass away, I think it was on the 11th of this month. So just wanted to let everybody know that. I'd like to make a comment that last month's meeting, I was intending to make a meeting, that would have been my 25th year on the commission at that meeting from 1999. And I have a year and a half till. Wow. You put up with a lot. Thanks. If there's nothing else, we stand adjourned.